I guess it's time. All right, let's bring the city council special meeting for July 30th, 2024 to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Mayor Carter.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Swatman.
Present.
Councilmember Baldwin.
Here.
Councilmember Davis. Councilmember Fullerton.
Here.
Councilmember Hubler.
Here.
Councilmember McLeimans.
Here.
And Councilmember Rock.
Here.
Just in time. There you go, perfect. All right.
Should we make a motion to excuse Councilmember Davis?
Yep, we could take a motion.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to excuse Councilmember Davis.
Second.
All those in favor of excusing Councilmember Davis, say aye.
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 Those opposed? Oh, nope, there he is.
We'll have to take that back.
Okay. Do we take roll call again?
I don't know. Do we need to do anything about that since Councilmember Davis just showed up?
I didn't know.
I know.
We're good.
Okay.
We didn't give them a chair.
Right? We have a little bit of time to figure it out. The first thing we're going to do in this special meeting is go into executive session for 20 minutes per RCW 42.30.1101C to consider the minimum price at which real estate will be offered for sale or lease when public knowledge regarding such consideration would cause a likelihood of decreased price and will reconvene with action to follow. Up to the third floor, okay. We'll be back in 20 minutes.
Well, that's the ones that have ours.
Yes.
Yeah. Link me one. You take our person, let me leave her here.
I would. Because I think I'm just going to like my papers.
Hello? Oh. How are you? Good. Two appointments on Mondays.
Have a beautiful Monday.
Come on, have a good day.
Anything working on you? You have more stuff outside for me?
Need one more person for super thought. That's the special meeting. Also did it start? I know. We are just waiting for council to return back down to the council chambers.
It doesn't watch the camera, doesn't care. It just needs to pick up a 90 after. I get a glimpse of every couple of days. I don't have armrests on my chair.
There's another item, yeah.
Let's put our luggage together right there.
No, the, is that the flock thing that we moved? Well, I know we did move the flock discussion down, but yeah, that's a contract.
This is AB 2421, Resolution R 2421. The council motion would be to authorize the transfer of funds from the general fund to the water fund to purchase the Reed property for park purposes and amending Resolution 2734 declaring the Reed property surplus to the city's needs.
If it's the only place for discussion, yeah. So as much I appreciate staff's work and all the public and private individuals that have, you know, made this come forward to us to have this opportunity to make this transfer to hopefully get a great addition to our park system. I know it's a little bit off and outside, but when we're talking about large portions of properties, 20 acres in size that we need to use for future park needs, a little bit of a procedural thing there to do that we're actually required to do that we've done a bunch of hunting to try to figure out how to do it in a more effective way, but could not come up with any way in my mind to help the fact that we're going to have to give away about seven figures of general fund monies to make the transfer properly to make sure that all the paperwork is done correctly from the water fund to the general fund. We're going to have to do this, so it sounds like something if we want to make the park property available to the general fund, that's what we need to do. So I guess that's what I'm going to have to do.
Very good. Thank you. Any other discussion? Well, I'll just throw out there, I completely agree. It's a, I think it's a great opportunity to add this piece of property to a, our parks area and get the fields and whatnot, take care of the ratepayers for the water fund issue and whatnot. And it's, this is a great opportunity and is a, we have a vision of what this city can be, and this is our, one of our big first steps forward for doing that. And it's something we said in the MOU that we signed with MRC is one of our things that we, it's one of our deliverables that we would move this forward to do this. So I'm excited to move forward with it, actually do something. All right, seeing no other discussion, this will go to our citizen comments. This is your time to address the council on item AB 2421, Resolution 2421 only. For those attending virtually, please click the raise hand icon at the top of your screen if you would like to address the council. Anyone with the raised hand icon or who called in, your mics and cameras will be enabled. You will need to turn on your video microphones on your end if you're wanting to be seen or heard. We'll start with those who are here in person and move to the virtual comments afterwards. You have five minutes. State your name and address for the record, please. Anyone? Please.
My name's Scott Knoll, 22523 48th Street, East Buckley, 98321. I just want to thank Mr. Mayor and the esteemed council for passing this forward, really look as one of the people, as one of the people in the community that really think that this is a big move. I appreciate what you guys are doing. I think it's a bold move and I'm really looking forward to helping be a part of any team or any, helping in any capacity to make this, this work go forward. So we're a team player. We're here to make the community better and anything we can do to make that happen, it's great. So I think this is a big first step, so I'm really grateful. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Knoll. Anyone else for the good of the order? Seeing no one, we'll now start those that are virtual. You have five minutes. State your name and address for the record, please. Don't see any raised hands. Just do, okay. Very good. All right. All right. We'll now turn those off and move on. Counsel, is there any other discussion versus matter? Seeing none, we'll now go to a vote. Those in favor of passing AB 24-21, Resolution R 2421, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Very good. Thank you. All right, next item, Madam Clerk.
This is AB 2459, Resolution R 2459. The council motion would be to authorize an 18-month extension of the WSU Forest Development Agreement.
Thank you. Counsel, is there any discussion before citizen comments? Deputy Mayor Swatman.
I don't want to lead us off.
Oh, sorry. Yeah, you're right. Need a motion, thank you. Motion in a second. Now, now Deputy Mayor Swatman.
All right, thank you very much. Yeah, I was kind of wondering how, I think this has changed in the length of time, right? So are we looking at 18 months now as opposed to something that was originally proposed, is my understanding?
Yeah, you know, following the discussion about, you know, is WSU or is Tarragon or Midtown Properties a subsidy, really interested in moving forward this as an act of
Don't see any raised hands. Just do, okay. Very good. All right. All right. Now turn those off and move on. Counsel, is there any other discussion versus matter? Seeing none, we'll now go to a vote. Those in favor of passing AB 24-21, Resolution R 2421, say aye. Very good. Thank you. All right, next item, Madam Clerk.
This is AB 2459, Resolution R 2459. The council motion would be to authorize an eighteen-month extension of the WSU Forest Development Agreement.
Thank you. Counsel, is there any discussion before citizen comments? Oh, sorry. Yeah, you're right. Need a motion. Thank you. Motion in a second. Now, Deputy Mayor Swatton.
All right. Thank you very much. Yeah, I was kind of wondering how, I think this has changed in the length of time, right? So are we looking at eighteen months now as opposed to something that was originally proposed, is my understanding?
Yeah, you know, following the discussion about, you know, is WSU or is Tarragon or Midtown Properties a subsidy, really interested in moving forward this as an active commitment, showing that they really are looking at trying to work with the city to find a collective solution in an expedient manner, requested that the time be reduced to eighteen months. We think that's sufficient to negotiate an amendment and bring it back to council and have council take action on that one, that amendment, one way or the other. So, you know, this, this is just, as we mentioned at the council meeting, just to give us enough time to negotiate without feeling like we have to get it all wrapped up in six months during budget season, which we just don't think is, which is doable.
So I was also wondering, you know, about the property itself and either the SEPA or the, all of those requirements that were done previously, because we're talking about modifying the development agreement. This is like an amendment to the existing development agreement. So the EIS process that was completed previously and all that that went through and everything for the property, that pretty much establishes, you know, and we used that in a recent court case to establish the five hundred ninety, six hundred seventy-two unit kind of thing that they were talking about in that court case. So they clearly, and we won that court case establishing that they had the right to develop those six hundred and seventy-two units, or plus or minus, wherever they're at on that. I don't understand why, where, what's the change now? Because, you know, we, we went to court and won that, that they were going to use that for residential units.
So there is a, there's a couple of issues that have, that have changed. One, that was about a contract issue, right? What was the true intent of the contract and the plain meaning of the contract? So that was us enforcing the contract as written, which is why we went to court, because we felt that in order to deviate from that contract as written, a development agreement amendment would be required, and we would need to look into those issues that you raised. So that was really what the, the, the court case was about, was whether or not, what was the interpretation of the contract. The, the second thing that has changed over the last three years is we've now started our comprehensive plan update, and we presented two growth strategies to the city council in order to meet our state mandated housing targets. And this is the first comprehensive plan that the city has faced in which we have got housing targets not as total housing units, but as by income band, zero to thirty percent, fifty percent to thirty percent, and fifty to eighty percent. And there's so many housing units we have to show capacity for within those income bands. And we presented kind of two strategies to the city council to achieve that comprehensive plan requirement. And we are required to submit a comprehensive plan that's consistent with state law. And I can talk about that in a second. One of those growth strategies was kind of a cross-the-board upzoning throughout the whole city. The second strategy was to focus our growth specifically within the midtown and downtown center and specifically identified the WSU Forest Residential Property as a property selected to it to have high-density, twenty, you know, more than twenty units per net acre on it in order so that we would not have to do the upzoning throughout the rest of the city to meet those housing targets. So the, the landscape under which we are developing that property has changed in order for us to meet those state mandated targets. We are required to have a comprehensive plan that meets the state mandates. If we don't, grants, loans, we will not become eligible for anymore. I don't know what it does to ones that we already have, what jeopardy that puts us into. Currently, we have about thirteen million dollars in grants and loans with state agencies, and we have an application in for another ten million dollars to help with the sewer treatment plant upgrades that we have to do this year at the biosolids. So that would take our total to about twenty-three million dollars, not accounting any grants or loans we plan to apply for this year or next year. And that also impacts our P C, our money to get money from the feds. We have about a half a million right now through PSRC, and we're looking for more money through the feds. So there is, there's kind of some funding strings attached by not having a consistent comprehensive plan. And so, like I said, getting back to our growth strategy, our growth strategy was to focus high-density development within midtown. If that's no longer the council's desire, we would need to change our growth strategy and start identifying other areas of the city to provide that high-density housing in order to meet the growth targets. So that's one of the, the landscape changes that has shifted between the time that Tarragon initially proposed to the city about a development agreement and today. Those numbers didn't get released by Department of Ecology until June-ish, late summer of 2023, early September 2023. So it's new information that has just gone into the making of all of this project. So I hope that answers your question.
Well, yeah, but I was mainly concerned about, there was an EIS done or in a SEPA process done when the original project was proposed. So that's kind of consistent with the impacts of the consistent, with the original project. The EIS and the SEPA documents are based on the original impact that was done, laid out. So, so if we're going to change that, or is there a proposal to change that, I wouldn't think that the existing EIS would be, you know, it would have to be redone. You'd have to do a new EIS statement to, if you wanted to upzone that area.
Well, we're not, we're not upzoning, right? Because the zoning itself.
Yeah, but see, the EIS was based on the six hundred and seventy-two units.
Right, the EIS was. You would have to, you would have to look at what additional impacts occur in order to create, to add additional housing units. So, for example, how many trips came off of this property? And we'd have to evaluate what the EIS looked at, and then what the current traffic studies look at and see what the differences and what mitigations are required. There are certain things that the EIS that don't change with the development of the property. For example, it was planned to be, the trees were planned to be removed. That, that would be true whether it's this number of units or this number of units. So there's parts of the EIS that are still valid, and that's why there's called an EIS addendum, and there's also an EIS, a supplemental EIS, as part of the development agreement amendment process. Once we have a kind of a confirmed plan, that's when we start looking at the SEPA process to determine where on that SEPA chain we fall when it comes to, is it an addendum where we just identify new mitigation measures for additional impacts? Is it a supplemental EIS? That will all be worked out through that addendum process or amendment process. Right now, we don't have a project to say the impact was Y and the impact's going to be X, so we need to do this. That's what we need the next eighteen months to figure out what that SEPA work is required to be and looks like.
So you're saying they could be required to do a new SEPA analysis and addendum to the EIS?
I, I would think it would fall somewhere between a supplemental or an addendum.
Right, yeah.
I see Councilmember McLehman says his hand up.
Yeah, I, I've been reviewing the previous development agreement, and I'm trying to understand what is to the city's advantage in maintaining the development agreement. Is it the, you know, because this development agreement has, you know, a lot of moving pieces to it. It has a commercial area, it has the city property, it has the, the residential property at the end. And some of this was saying that the, that the development of the residential property must be consistent with the city's guidelines. I think that is what basically, I'm not quite sure, but, you know, because it's, I'm not an attorney, you know, we read all this stuff all the time. Anyway, can you give me a couple of sections that I can look at and that are clear at why the city wants to keep this development agreement in force?
Well, I, I would, I would, I would say, I don't know if I can point to a specific section right here this moment of why the, why we'd want to keep this development agreement in place. I, I think what we're, what we're saying is the, the landscape around the development of this property has significantly changed with the changes because of the Growth Management Act. And we feel that the best way to protect the city and move forward to make sure that we clearly identify all the impacts, make sure council is part of the process of developing this property, is to go through a development agreement amendment and identify specifically what benefits there are to the city and what benefits there are to the developer. The, the whole process of a development agreement is to result in a project that would be better than if we just followed the municipal code. And that's why I reminded council is if the development agreement expires on December 31st, 2024, it's not like the project gets built out at six hundred and seventy-two units. The project gets built out under the R3 density, which has no density maximums. It's just a minimum of ten units per net acre, no maximum density, so you could be forty units per acre.
That would directly collide with the EIS, though.
Correct. But that, but that's all, but that's what they would, that's what the zoning would allow.
Wait, but the EIS runs with the land, right?
No, the EIS runs with the project. So then we would have to look at what the next project is and to determine what the environmental impacts are for that project and whether or not the, we could rely on the EIS or not. That would be a decision we'd make at that time. What the, what the extension of the development agreement amendment does is it provides the city eighteen months to find a solution, a cooperative solution with Tarragon that achieves multiple objectives that, for the city. One, we have to find a way to bring high-density housing in in order to meet our growth targets. It allows it to be done in a way that has council in part of that process. If it just goes to standard zoning, those are just building permits and design review decisions. That's really all that would need to be done, other than civil permits. They're all administrative-type permits. Given the scale and scope of the project, we think having council involved in having those discussions about what are the concerns, what are the impacts, what are the creative solutions for mitigation, allows us to create a project that would be better than if we just follow our development code. So to get to Councilmember McLehman's question, I think it's what's missing from the development agreement, which is why, which is why we think we should have the extension. It's there are things missing from the development agreement that provide clarity around the project and clarity around design of the buildings, SEP, TED, all those concerns that the city council has that we can use the development agreement process to mitigate for. So I think it's what's missing in the development agreement, which is why we should extend it for eighteen months to see if we can add those things into the development agreement to protect the city's interests.
As opposed to a new one, though, why wouldn't we just simply do a new development agreement? You know, property's already like, we already own the piece that acres in the middle for the park, and Costco already owns their stuff. They're all done over on their side. So, you know, this is their now Midtown Properties piece. Why wouldn't you just do a development agreement, a new one against that piece of property?
I, I think one of the big issues, there are some things in a development agreement. For example, we have spent a lot of money, and developers have spent a lot of money building the regional stormwater pond. Under the development agreement currently, we're vested to those old stormwater standards. If we, if the development agreement expires, that vesting to those old development standards for the stormwater change, which changes the calculation of the project. So there are reasons why we're saying a amendment.
That seems to be to the developers' advantage, not to ours.
Well, it's also to ours because the ponds get dedicated to the city, and we maintain them.
Well, they're already dedicated to this.
Well, this one is. But then, but once we build new, once we have to enlarge these ponds, and when they get bigger to meet the new standards, those become more pond areas that we have to maintain. So there is some advantage to the city of operating under that master drain plan that we've already approved. I'm not saying it's a lot of incentive, but we're trying to find a deal that works for both the developer and the city. And so there are things in the development agreement that developer is interested in maintaining. So in order to have a development agreement that is a win-win before the city, the developer, and the community, extending the development agreement, and I, and I think I would caution is extending the development agreement does not guarantee the council's going to vote for anything. It doesn't mean the council's going to approve a subsequent project. It doesn't bind your vote on a subsequent project. It simply provides staff and the developer and another eighteen months to talk and try to come up with a creative solution. That's all we're asking for, really, is time to talk.
Yeah, I would just also throw out there, over the last few months, Captain, when Councilmember Roach was on the council, he and I had met as well. We've had some discussions back and forth, and there was definitely, you know, everything's, we're talking, so there's pie in the sky or whatnot, right? It's not necessarily coalesced into anything yet, but I think there's the opportunity for that to occur. And so giving time for that to happen and to have, have that communication is hugely valuable. So I would just throw that out there. And I'm going to go to Councilmember McLehman's and then Councilmember Hubler.
I'm okay.
Oh, okay. Thank you. That's Mary Hubler.
I'm, I think this is a great opportunity for us to work with Tarragon and Midtown Properties. I've, I've seen their vision. I think for us, it would benefit us if we work with them to build their vision and our vision together, not just them do whatever they want to do. So second, I remember correctly in this development agreement that if the Costco development, when a business comes in, they have to tie into the sewer lines. Doesn't that make the rates higher for the businesses after, or when the, like, the, wasn't there a tie-in agreement or something like that to, Late Comers? That was what it was called, wasn't it? Late Comers?
I, I don't believe there's a Late Comers on this one. I think that was out in the East Town project.
Okay.
That, and John, you were around. I can't remember any Late Comers on this. It was the Peak 410 Development Agreement and Late Comers that was done for the lift station. I think there was talk about you could do a Late Comers, but there wasn't one activated. And getting to, you know, some of the concerns, I am the council's advocate and the mayor's advocate as part of these negotiations. I'm not going in there with my, what I think. My job is to carry forward kind of what the council's concerns and ideals are and bring that narrative to that conversation and try to work for solutions that address those council concerns and, and be the council's and the mayor's kind of, I don't know, advocate in, in these conversations. So I'm not walking in there trying to say this is a great project or isn't a great project. I'm just saying that we've got some issues that we need to address, and I think this is the best path forward to address those issues.
All right, we'll now go on to citizen comments. This is your time to address the council on item AB 2459, Resolution 2459 only. For those attending virtually, please click the raise hand icon at the top of your screen if you would like to address the council. Anyone with the raised hand icon or who called in your mic, on your mics and cameras will need to be enabled. You will need to turn on your video microphones at your end if you're wanting to be seen or heard. We will start with those who are here in person and move to virtual comments afterwards. You have five minutes. State your name and address for the record, please. And I'll start with those that are virtual. Five minutes.
You mean in person.
Sorry. Yes, thank you.
Afternoon. Graham Satterwhite, 21220 South Prairie Road. Good evening, Mayor, council members and staff. I'm a senior development manager with Tarragon and authorized representative of Midtown Properties LLC. Thanks for the opportunity to comment on the item you're considering. First, for those who don't know Tarragon, just a little bit of background. We are what you would call a portfolio developer. That means the communities that we build, we intend to hold in perpetuity. That's a pretty stark contrast from another model called a merchant builder, where they will often build a community, own and operate for a few years, and then sell and transact and leave. So that means we are investing and partnering in the communities where we build and work, and that we are long-term partners, and our decision-making process is a little bit different than other development models, or at least we weigh factors differently than folks who are going to be leaving the community. Over the past fifteen years, as has been noted, the commercial area has substantially developed, but then there's been near zero activity in the parks and residential components. And we see this extension and ongoing negotiations as an opportunity to better align the development agreement with today's economic realities and recent updates to the parks and open space plans and needs and desires of Bonnie Lake. The eighteen-month extension would provide ample time for us to explore all those opportunities and establish terms and conditions that are beneficial to all stakeholders. The land bubble diagram that Jason previously shared is really a reflection of some of those key principles that early conversations have been around. Things like making the development agreement consistent with envisioned Bonnie Lake's housing element, facilitating parks, trails, open space and recreation implementation, support for the mobility element and transportation improvements, and delivering utility and infrastructure improvements that not only improve system capacity, but also resiliency. We're excited about the opportunity to continue those conversations and explore what a development agreement amendment could look like. Lastly, I did want to close with a point I made earlier about who Tarragon is and how we operate. We're not a national out-of-state builder. Puget Sound is our home. We have an office down in Sumner. We have employees who are residents of Bonnie Lake. We're partners and collaborators who are part of this community now, and we will be in the future, one way or the other. We appreciate the opportunity to pursue the creative solutions that make Bonnie Place, Bonnie Lake a better place to live for a a better place to live for existing residents while providing housing opportunity and choices for those who want to be part of this community. We appreciate the council's consideration on this item and encourage approval of the 18-month extension. And we look forward to working further with staff and clarifying the opportunities and benefits of a potential Development Agreement Amendment. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else on this item?
Mayor Council, Dan Decker, past council member, 204170 Street, East Bonne Lake, Washington. I just wanted to say, thank you very much for your hard work and dedication in dealing with the Reed property. And I hope that everything goes the way the plans are for that. And the WSU property, again, thank you very much. And hopefully we can get the WSU property finished up and all of what needs to be done there will be finished. And again, thank you for your hard work. Thank you very much.
Thank you. OK, now we'll go to those that are virtual. You have five minutes. State your name and address for the record, please. I don't see any hands up. All right, well, I'll turn off the mics for those that are virtual. Council, any other discussion before we move to a vote? I'm sorry. Oh, Councilmember McLeimans, thank you for pointing.
Yes. Yeah, so I, you know, I'd just like to remind the council and and then let the council members who are new.
Are you there? Kelly, we can't hear you.
Ed's cut off his feed.
Yeah, right.
That they're in the community.
Councilmember McLeimans, you can been kind of in or out, just want to let you know you're breaking up.
Can you hear us, Kelly?
Mic check, mic check. One, two, one, two, one, two. Maybe we can come back to Kelly, maybe you can.
Maybe call him on the phone and just.
Oh, yeah, I could do that, right?
Come on speakers.
I think one of the other council members also.
Should we call him?
Yeah, I'm texting him right now.
Ellen, we can't hear.
Yes.
What leverage you give us?
There you are.
That's all I have, thanks.
OK, we didn't hear anything you said.
We're guy.
Councilmember McLeimans.
We didn't hear anything.
Zero talking from you. Can you hear us?
We didn't.
Councilmember McLeimans.
We did not hear a single thing. Do you want me to put you my phone up to your mic, the mine mic, not yours? Well, we'd like to hear what you were saying. OK, one second. OK, Councilmember McLeimans, go ahead.
Go ahead.
So I wanted to.
Sorry. He needs to mute himself on his computers. Oh, mute your teams, please.
I think you did.
I did.
There you go.
Hey, go ahead.
All right, so I just wanted to remind council and and to let the new members know that, you know, we're here because we've already had a discussion with Tarragon. We made it clear that we wanted to keep the 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 density low. We did not want to see.
No. If you're talking, we can't hear you again.
I think they'd pay for like a good Wi-Fi.
Here we go.
You know, you think of like high-end, like it's like space aliens.
I'll call him again.
Yeah, if you want to try to. In the meantime, Councilmember Fullerton.
Yeah, so according to my understanding, by extending this agreement, this is actually going to allow the council with the same amount, if not more negotiating power. It kind of it does keep that those numbers down where we wanted to have them. And if we don't extend it, then it would go into the GMA or the comprehensive plan numbers. Is that correct or?
I I would say partially. I I think it does keep council involved in the negotiation process. I would be disingenuous if I didn't say there would be a change in the total unit count because as part of meeting our obligations in the Growth Management Act, we need to start looking at ways to provide more units on that property in order to not have to upzone other parts of the city. So, yes, it keeps council involved in the process. Would it keep the density as low? I would be disingenuous if I said yes. So we do expect the density numbers to change. My point was, if you don't extend the Development Agreement, it doesn't stop the project. It just removes council from the equation of how we get to a project. As I said, part of the challenge is, in order to meet the density requirements we're having to meet, we have two choices. One is to work and figure out how to make it work on this property, or you take less density on this property and figure out how to upzone other parts of the city to provide that loss of density. So it's a zero-sum game. It's the density is either going to go here or we have to identify other neighborhoods to upzone in order to provide that offsetting density loss.
OK, I have him back on the phone. Are you there?
You walk outside.
Kelly, are you there?
Nope. Maybe he can just text you what he.
Oh, I already know what he wants to say. I can really say what he wants to say.
Would you want to say for him?
I mean, I guess. Oh, there he is.
Hey, yeah, so, yeah, I just, I don't know really kind of how to vote here because I don't understand what leverage we have. But I did with council is that I think it's extremely important to try to maintain, and I think you know that, I think I made that clear, a residential atmosphere in in the city. And once you let the genie out of the bottle, you're not getting it back in. So that's one of that. Thank you, sorry.
You were good there, thank you. Councilmember Baldwin.
Yeah, I would second what Councilmember McLeimans was saying. I know that we have a representative here from Tarragon explaining just their thought process, I guess, behind how they build and things like that. But I remember being here when we were very upset that they were wanting to increase the amount of properties. And really, like, this situation is us just being backed into a corner because of the Growth Management Act and just kind of trying to finagle a way to add more density into the city. And as far as what Councilmember McLeimans was saying, like, this is a bedroom community and we're not a high-density place. People move here because they don't want to live in the city. So just something to think about when you're voting and all that good stuff. Yeah.
Councilmember Rock.
So as part of the comprehensive plan, in order to get our grants and funding from the state, we have to project, we met about this earlier this week. And so it's my understanding, we have to provide high-density housing of a certain percent within the city. So if we are not putting it on this property, then we're going to have to plant it someplace else. So if we don't want to put it here, we need to start brainstorming of where we're going to put it. I don't want to see large developments or a bunch of high-density housing here either. I also ask the question of, what if we don't get the state funding? What if we don't project that on our comprehensive plan? And it would be millions of millions of dollars that are lost to the city. They can remove our option to where we're not getting the real estate excise tax, which is even more money that comes into the city. So really, we don't have the option to not project those numbers. They have to be projected, and it's an issue of, do we put them here? Or do we want to put them in other areas that are already developed?
If I remember correctly from what Mr. Sullivan was saying is, if we don't continue and extend this agreement, then Tarragon Midtown Properties will still get to build, and they could put more properties or more high-density on there than what we would like. Is that correct?
Correct. The 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 growth strategy that was presented to the City Council identifies that once we when we adopt our comprehensive plan at the end of the year, we're adopting a new zoning map. That new zoning map that we're adopting identifies the property as R3. Under the current R3 zoning classification, there is no maximum density in the R3. It is a minimum of 10 units per acre, no maximum. So that's that's what happens on January 1st without the Development Agreement Amendment.
As far as the Growth Management Act issue and the density, what year does this take us out to as far as being?
This takes us out till 20. I say this, this will take, the plan takes us all the way out to 2049. Our concurrency check is at 2045. 10 years from now, we'll have to do another update and roll it out another 20 years. And so there's two things going on, right? If we were to downzone the property and say it has to be single-family or less dense now, and that's the direction of the City Council, then I have to stop working on the comp plan and come back with a new growth strategy to identify where we're going to upzone to provide that additional capacity because we just lost it on this property. That would happen now. If we, when we move forward, if we don't, it's a, we did find ways to add that density. When we come and do our comprehensive plan update in 10 years from now, we're going to have to find that density somewhere. And so it is a very zero-sum game. This project, and I think the other thing to understand about the development of the property, it is not day one, there's zero units, day two, there's X units. The project's going to be built out over probably, I think we've talked last time, eight to 10 years. So from the day you approve the Development Agreement to the last unit is done is 10 years from now. So you're talking 2034 at the earliest. It'd probably be more like 2035, 2036. So all through that time, we're adding that high-density. And as I, that's why I mentioned earlier, I understand the city's council concerns. I I understand the concerns with the legislature and some of the mandates they're putting on the city. I just think that the best way to work forward with that is have council involved in that discussion and that negotiation process versus just passing permits administratively for building permits and design reviews. So that that's, I guess, did I answer your question?
Yeah, yeah, thank you. Councilmember Hubler.
Just to make sure I'm clear on this, if we don't approve this and they build however many they want, that means they could put a 10-story apartment unit and have 5,000 units in that, whatever fits. Is that correct?
Correct. They would have, they would have to show it all fits with parking and landscaping requirements. I can't say it would be 2,000 units. I can't say it'd be 500,000 units. I can just say the fact, which is, once you move to an R3, there is no density cap.
Councilmember Fortin.
Yeah, I wouldn't be myself if I didn't protest a little bit about the comprehensive plan. The state, in all of their glorious wisdom, fails to produce the solution for all of this beautiful traffic that we're going to be creating with all of these units and new families coming in. You have to understand that even a studio apartment can house two people comfortably. So that would be two cars. So I'm very upset that the state doesn't provide for transportation grants with zero strings attached and zero comprehensive studies attached to those grants on how we're going to turn our parking lot, getting to 167 and I-5, into a non-parking lot. So that being said, I do understand the need to extend this this contract. But of course, I have to protest because I wouldn't be myself if I didn't do that. So hopefully, we can come up with some plans on our parking lot issue.
I would say staff understands, and I think there's a lot of frustration with the number of mandates coming down from the state legislature to local jurisdictions. That is a common discussion among local planners across the board that, you know, there the the amount of local control that has been taken away from the state by the state legislature for zoning and growth decisions has, over my time in planning, when I got this, this is my third comp plan update. When I did our first one, it was some general goals that you had to meet and some general requirements. Over that 20 years, those requirements have become more and more and more specific. So I can appreciate and I totally understand the frustration. We're just trying to bring forward the the facts that are on the ground and how understanding of what our requirements are in order to meet those requirements and then try to find ways to work with the City Council to mitigate the impacts as much as possible. And that's why the growth strategy that we did bring forward does focus the growth in Midtown and down and and downtown, allowing the remaining parts of the community to stay in their in their traditional zoning patterns. So we're trying to balance those objectives of the City Council with those requirements that are coming down from the state legislature that is becoming more top-heavy. We can appreciate and totally understand that. And I'm and there is conversations and planning circles. And when we talk with Commerce about the fact that there's more, this is more of a top-down approach than a bottom-up approach, which was what how the Growth Management Act was sold in the 90s. It was going to be a bottom-up approach with general guidance. It's being flipped on its head. We understand that and we appreciate that, and we do vocalize those concerns every time we do talk with our counterparts. And it is something that other planning directors are talking about, the law, the kind of the loss of local control in some of these planning decisions.
And Deputy Mayor Swatman.
Thank you. You know, I don't understand one point that kind of has been bantered around a bit about, you know, if we don't do an agreement and we figure out something that works for the city, citizens and the developer, that they'll be able to allowed to do whatever they want to do.
Yeah, I was wondering.
So there's some logical like issues there because if I'm the developer and I can get to do whatever I want to do, that's my path. I'm going for it. I'm out of here. Why do I need an agreement with the city that's going to tie my hands? So that keeps kind of being brought up, which sounds kind of bizarre. But I think, you know, my main point is about these types of agreements, because I've been around for a few days. The nice words that developers say, and they're they're very accurate because these are great people. Tarragon's a great company and they they do a lot for the area. But that speech that was given is the exact same speech it was given 20 years ago. Exact same thing the developers always say in every development that they ever do that they're going to say, because they're, that's what they're honestly trying to do. But you don't have to look too far. You can look, and that exact same speech would cover what used to be Cascadia, which they call now.
To Holly.
To Holly. And, you know, they were going to have like mixed housing out there, by the way. You know, it was in there. It was passed very difficult through the county council that there was mixed levels of housing, housing bans, all that stuff in there. Yeah, well, a couple of months ago, they bought out of that, by the way, because part of the agreement was they could not do that and just get out of it. Sunrise Development, same kind of thing, you know? It's it's just the same kind of thing. Ultimately, for me, it comes down to the fact that I think developers should be able to do whatever they need to do under the zoning that the council passed. So that should be the thing because when you get parties like this, it's it's and you get humans involved in agreements between two parties, and you're talking about millions of dollars that are on different sides of the table. Seen it many times, you know, temptation is there and temptation is real and temptation is really easy to fall into. You have to avoid that. And to me, being a, you know, unnecessary regulation kind of guy, I really actually live by that. When I say that there shouldn't be unnecessary regulations, I'm going to say that developers should be able to do what they can do under the existing zoning. I'm not going to try to put existing extra stuff on top of them. So I'm going to stick with a no on this because, you know, I just don't like it when we get into these recursive agreements where it's like, well, you know, we could just extend this out or we could just change this or we could do that. Well, no, so easy for me. I'm not going to go with temptation. I'm going to stay with, no, thank you.
OK, thank you. Any other comments from council?
Kelly had his hand up or?
I think he was giving a thumbs up to what Jason was saying. Councilmember McLemmons?
No, okay. Or Jason had his hand up.
I agree that, with Councilmember Swatman, that property rights are sacred, and that they should be able to do what they want to do. There's a whole bunch of, you know, the, the state has a whole bunch of other mandates that they put on these developers. So I, I think probably somewhere in one of those mandates is a reason why they want to keep the development agreement going, because there's something in the development agreement that will make their, their life easier if we keep it enforced. You know, and that's, so anyway. But yeah, they need to be able to do what they, they want to do with the understanding that the agreement at the time was, you know, of 650 units. They knew that. They had no intention to stick with that. And, you know, that, that's my sticking point. I'm done.
Thank you. Councilmember Hubler.
Made me think, Councilmember McLemmons. Mr. Sullivan, was there, what is the benefit for sticking with this and, and Tarragon or Midtown Properties? If, what, what helps them in this current agreement?
Because I'm not behind their closed doors, having all their discussions about all their, why they want this development agreement in place. Some things that I can think of just knowing development, one, is the stormwater regulations stay vested to those older standards, which does provide a benefit to both, both parties. The second is, one of the biggest costs in development is uncertainty. And so when you're building a project out over a 10-year window, that uncertainty adds cost, because vesting doesn't occur until you actually file a building permit. So if the, as you're laying out your pro forma and you're designing a project, if it's a decade-long project, there is a risk every time the year passes that the codes could change and impact that project. The real big advantage of a development agreement is it does provide certainty, that these are the rules of the game for the project. And so it kind of helps the developer understand, as I build this project out over a decade, these are the rules I'm playing by. Deputy Mayor Swatman is correct, they can be changed, but that requires a public hearing and council action. And so it's something that can't just be done administratively by staff behind closed doors. So those are two things that I know of, that really development agreements provide, that's one of the big advantages, is they provide certainty for projects that are decade-long. This is, we're estimating about a $300 million investment into the city. And so that certainty over a decade and a $300 million investment does provide some advantage. Are there other things in the development agreement, and they're reading a development agreement that they think provides advantage? I'm sure there is, but I'm not part of those discussions, and I wouldn't know all of those things.
Councilor Fullerton.
Yeah, so we're talking about property rights, and the developer being able to do with what they want with their property. So we do have a representative from that company that is asking us to extend this agreement, because they want to utilize the agreement for their property rights, to be able to do with what they want. So to me, they're telling us that their desire is to extend this. So that would be their desire according to their property rights, that, that we're allowing them to extend this agreement. So I don't actually understand the opposite argument when they're telling us the direction that they want the council to go. Now whether there's underlying things that, that they see that, that we don't, I guess, when we're negotiating that contract in the future that's been extended, because that's what they asked for, then I guess we can figure it out as we go. But regardless of whether we extend it or not, everything is going to be, figure out, figure it out as we go, because at this point, there's nothing in stone. All we do know is that this will help us in the future to be able to keep the grants that we have, hopefully obtain more grants, and pray to God that the state grows some brains and figures out how to extend the 410 without us having to pay for it.
Councilmember Hubler.
I agree with Councilmember Fullerton on that stuff, because it is, they are the ones requesting this. And that is, that is their, their desire is for us to negotiate and work with them to come up with this. My understanding is there, there are a lot of benefits that will come to the city from this development agreement extension.
Can you name any?
I'm, Jason, do you know of any that?
Wait.
I, I don't know if Mr. Ratty has, you know, like, some of the things I've talked with him about, like, there, there could be park impact fees added in upfront. There could be things like, you know, making sure, like, our, our list stations are done, our roundabouts. I mean, there's, there's all kinds of things that could come as a benefit to us if we work together with them to make this a better development agreement, and then not have 5,000 units in this, instead of, it could only, you know, I think they were only asking for like, 10, 1000, or 1,000, like 1,050 or something like that, or?
And I, and I think that those benefits, those are what come out of the negotiation. But yeah, definitely, you know, I know Dennis has mentioned, maybe the park impact fees get paid upfront.
Front.
That's an advantage to both parties. The other thing that's been talked about is when they have the grading equipment out there, are they grading out where we're putting the ball fields in? So that's a cost that we don't have to bear when we go to build out Midtown Park. You know, I, I would, you know, not looking at this development agreement, but just trying to parallel, when we did the development agreement with P410, they built out a significant amount of infrastructure that they would otherwise not have been required to build as part of the negotiations. That's infrastructure that the city would have had to pay more for if we would have done it at, as capital projects, as compared to the developer building that infrastructure. One of it is the sewer backbone in Easttown. It's just an example of how these, the agreements work for both public and private benefit. You know, as part of the P410 development, the developer's building the sewer main all the way out to 234th. That's not his, would not have been his requirement to do his project. But that was part of the negotiated benefit, to extend the project from his edge all the way out to 234th, because the city gave up some things elsewhere. And so that's, that's where these negotiations are important, where we sit down and talk, and we look at, what are the objectives the council wants? I, I think I have a pretty good understanding and fairness, clarity around the council's objectives. And I will say, as we go through this process, if the council members would like to meet with me to understand where we're negotiating and what the negotiations are looking like, and really have reports on those, and making sure that we understand fully what the council's, not just concerns are, but objectives, desires for what would be a positive project. Not saying that we're going to hit everything perfectly, but I understand the concerns of putting this large of a development within the city. And I understand the city council's concerns, and as I've mentioned before, our job is to take the city council's concerns and find ways and find solutions to bring back for the council's consideration, not to make the council's decision for them. So, yeah, if there, if there are objectives and concerns you want to voice and things that I need to hear, I'm more than open, and I will bring all of those to the table. Also, benefits that you would like to see from this as a trade-off for the project, I'll bring those to the table as well.
I, I'm not laughing at you. Kelly just clapped.
Yeah. It's got a nice little golf.
Always take those.
Yeah. Any further discussion? Deputy Mayor Swatman?
Oh, he's doing it again.
No, yeah, no, because there was a question specifically about, you know, the ability of the developers to do what they needed to do out there with their property. A development agreement is a layer on top of that, and as Mr. Sullivan accurately points out, when they're doing the large developments, a agreement is a surety of them being able to do the development, you know, economically under their framework that they need to do, because it is, you know, capitalist society, they have to do that. They could have done that before, that's why the agreement had a termination date on it, but, you know, here nor there, right? They're here back again, to try to do it again, under different circumstances. So clearly, you know, they can't do what they needed to do under the existing framework. So they're asking for special, you know, special conditions, which they have to do when they're doing a larger development. So that's, that's again where, you know, my contention is, it gets into just the mud of, you know, millions of dollars, and it's just not a good place for elected officials to be in, when, you know, millions of dollars are floating around on tables. It's just not a good environment for an elected official to be in. So, you know, staff and those guys and the, and the builders do a great job in there, but when you get elected officials mixed in with a room with the millions of dollars, it doesn't work well.
Councilor Fullerton.
I don't think that any council member will be in the room for that negotiation. I certainly would recuse myself from something like that, but I think this is just giving staff the directive that they are able to proceed forward with Tarragon, which is what they are actually asking for, knowing that they have property rights, and this is the property rights that they're choosing to ask us to extend for them. So I don't see where there would be any conflict of interest involved with any of the council members. That's not the, the ask, is not that we come to the table and negotiate with them, it's just that staff will be doing the negotiation, and, and they're asking for the extension, regardless of what the underlying reasons may be. You know, do we grant them their property rights to do with their property what they want to do, which would be to extend the agreement, in my opinion?
Which gives them millions of dollars.
Is, if they, if we come to an agreement, we, let's say we extend this agreement, and then you guys talk, right? You come up with something, that will come back to council, yes?
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
So this is an opportunity to please go talk, for 18 months.
Yes, this is, come talk, and then there would be a public hearing, council consideration, council discussion, council voting up and down. Voting, if, if the entire council voted yesterday to extend the development agreement, that does not obligate or require the council to vote on the amendment itself. That would be weighed on its merits when it brought, was brought forward, separate from this action. This is just, go talk.
Thank you. Councilmember Fullerton, and then Councilmember Baldwin.
I would like to ask Council Robertson. Council, so is there conflict of interest for us to expand this, or to extend this contract? Is there conflict with millions of dollars?
No, there's no conflict, and this, nor is there a conflict for the City Council to grant an amendment later or a new development agreement. It is wholly within your authority under state law, and it's only, I would add to what Director Sullivan said, it is only the council's authority to vote on development agreements, extensions of development agreements, amendments of development agreements. That is the council role, and it's only the city council's role, after, generally after a public hearing for a development amendment or a development agreement.
And also, should we be contacted by Tarragon or any of the companies, and they want to meet with us for any reason, would that be, could, that could create a conflict, or would that not create a conflict?
You know, that's an area of the law that's, that people differ on. Under state law, development agreements are legislative act by the City Council. Legislative acts, you do not have to be impartial, as you do with a quasi-judicial act. However, I believe under your code, development agreements are considered quasi-judicial. Some city attorneys treat them as quasi-judicial always. So when we are in the negotiations for an amendment to the development agreement, we would encourage the council not to meet with the developer or any other party, someone that's against it or for it, because if, as a quasi-judicial hearing at that time, you would have to disclose any of those contacts on the record, because you would be sitting as judges on the development agreement. So at, right now, extending it, not an issue. Once we get into negotiating, I would encourage council members to not get involved in negotiations, talking to the public, or talking to the developer about the details of the development agreement or the proposed development at that time.
Thank you for clarification.
You're welcome.
Councilor Baldwin.
Just to clarify, this is not an ask for necessarily an extension. This is an ask to shorten the extension to 18 months. Isn't that, I'm, I'm reading it almost verbatim.
We, when we originally brought the extension request to council for discussion, three weeks ago, we had a 36-month extension in there.
Right.
After that conversation, the decision was made to reduce it to an 18-month decision.
By who, by who?
The developer requested it to go down to 18.
They want to shorten it by half.
Correct.
Want to lengthen it from the current date by 18 months.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, because it expires into this.
Yeah.
In December.
In December.
Yeah, so I guess voting today, so it, the extension is requested by the developer, and it may be granted by the, the City Council. Initially, the grant, the request was for a three-year extension.
Six.
In order to, yeah, 36 months.
Yeah.
In order, in order to show commitment that the developer is working through the process and wants to move through to find a solution, they requested it go down to 18 months. So the vote today with the council would extend the expiration date from December 31st, 2024, to sometime in June 2026.
Yeah, 18 months ahead of that, instead of 36.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, yeah, that's what I...
But we never approved the 36 yet either, so it just got changed.
Any further comments from council? Okay. Take it to a vote. All those in favor of Resolution 2459, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Nay.
Roll call. Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember Hubler.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Swatman.
Nay.
Councilor Fullerton.
Aye.
Councilmember Baldwin.
Nay.
Councilmember Rock.
Aye.
Councilmember McLemmons. Councilmember McLemmons, were you able to vote?
I am a nay.
A nay, thank you. What was our total on that?
This was four to three.
Four to three, thank you. Very good. All right, thank you, everyone. Seeing no other business, we are adjourned.
But you can probably answer.
Yeah.